God, there's nobody here tonight.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Frazier zoning board of appeals for December the 5th to order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Board member Burley.
He is excused. He is on vacation, or business, I think, trip.
Board member Chmenty. Chair Farina.
Here.
Board member Green.
Here.
Board member Menendez.
Board member Stasek.
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay, the agenda there, are there any changes that anyone wants to make to the agenda?
No, but I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second. Second.
Motion by Roseanne, seconded by Emma. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Okay, from November 7th, are there any changes to the minutes from November 7th?
Yes, there is. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of November 7th with the following correction on page 37B under the motion area. It's just a spelling correction of my name. And we have the corrected copy here this evening.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Contestants, members of the audience, the zoning board of appeals, as herein created, is a body of limited powers. Where there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the Frazier code, the board shall have the powers in passing upon appeals to vary, modify any of the provisions of the code relating to the construction, structural changes in equipment or alterations of buildings or structures so that the spirit of the code shall be observed, public safety secured, and substantial justice done. No variance in the provisions or requirements of the code shall be authorized by the board unless the board finds evidence that all of the following conditions exist: that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to this property in question as to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same district; that such a variance is necessary for preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights similar to those possessed by other properties in the same district and the same vicinity. The possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be deemed sufficient to warrant a variance; that the authorization, and see, the authorization of such a variance shall not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the intent or the purpose of the Frazier code or the public interest; and D, that the condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of that property for which the variance is sought is not of so general a nature or recurrent a nature as to make it reasonably practical that the formulation of a general regulation for such condition or situation. Having heard that, before us tonight are ZBA 24-077, Mr. Mister. I'm sorry. It is, yeah, Mr. Carwash, not Mr. Mister. Lauren, do you want to take us through it?
Thank you, Chair Farina. So, this request is for an automatic car wash and outdoor vacuum stalls at 34625 Utica, also containing part of the Meyer lot, which is 34835 Utica Road, at last night's planning commission. The site plan was conditionally approved. One of those conditions was that either a compliant photometric plan is submitted or a variance is sought, and that's the variance that's before this board tonight. So, the variance is to exceed the maximum illumination levels in the driveway from 21 when four is the maximum permitted, in parking areas to exceed it to 33-foot candles when only four are permitted, and again, 33 for walks when only two are permitted for walks in our ordinance. So, in reviewing against the four standards, the first one being that there's exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zoning district. Also, the applicant states that there's unique characteristics for the use, including the performance by customers of tasks outside their vehicles such as vacuuming, drying, or applying specialty products, and that's creating a unique or extraordinary circumstance not found in other properties. Planning finds that performing tasks outside of vehicles, we don't find that to be unique to the property. For example, gas stations also require this. For the second item, that the variance is necessary for the preservation, enjoyment of a substantial property right, and the possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be deemed enough to warrant a variance. The applicant provided that without granting this variance, it would create an unsafe condition on the site which may not allow this project to move forward by allowing the light illumination to be enhanced during operating hours. This will allow Mr. Carwash to safely operate and for the existing vacant site to be redeveloped into a state-of-the-art express tunnel car wash. So, planning will note that the hours of operation are from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We'll defer to the applicant if that's changed, but that was what was provided on the special land use. We do not believe that granting this variance is necessary for the preservation or enjoyment of a substantial property right like those possessed by the properties. To the north, the AutoZone property did submit a compliant lighting plan. Additionally, other commercial general auto-centric uses have committed to compliant lighting plans. Regarding the third criteria, that the authorizing of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to the adjacent property, will not impair the intent or purpose, the applicant provided that the site sits within a commercial general zone with the commercial uses and public right of way on all sides. Light level at the property lines will meet city ordinances, and the elevated illumination levels will be mitigated on-site during non-operating hours by turning off the POS canopy lighting and every other vacuum light arm. Elevated light illumination levels will have no adverse effect on the neighboring property or users. Planning does not find that granting this variance will materially impair the intent or purpose as the site does not abut any non-commercial uses and is located on a major thoroughfare. And then finally, regarding that the conditions or the situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought is not so general recurrent that it will create a general rule. So, the applicant provided that due to the specialized nature of the car wash with exterior vacuums, the vacuums necessitate a special land use within the city of Frazier zoning ordinances, thus coupled with the fact that there are no other express tunnel washes with exterior vacuums located in the city of Frazier indicates a unique circumstance that's not so common to warrant a general rule for such conditions. We note that the conditions, which the variance sought, may not be unique to the use. The variance sought is for increased illumination levels to necessitate safe travel and usage within the services of site, and this may be applicable to other auto-centric uses such as a carryout or a drive-through, restaurants, gas stations, or other service, auto-service uses. The last two items are not applicable as there's no phasing, it's not sponsored by planning commission. So, overall, we do not find a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship that would necessitate granting the variance, and so for those reasons, planning's recommendation is denying this. Additionally, just for context, it was requested that we provide some lighting, illumination level maximums from peer communities. That's what you have before you, just to kind of provide some context to what other communities are doing, although that in and of itself also shouldn't be a reason to grant a variance.
Well, if I look at this, we're at four foot candles. I would interpret that as an average of four foot candles because it's going to be brighter under a light and then average it out because that's the same as East Point, that's an average, 10 with an average of five. Three with an average of five for Sterling Heights, 10 with an average of five for Clinton Township, .5 for Centerline, wow, and five for Madison Heights. So, we're very close to what all the surrounding areas are. Now, at the edge of the property, isn't there, if I recall right, isn't there a requirement that the light can't go out into the other area?
So, there is a requirement about how bright it can be at the property line.
Looking at the ordinance here, I don't know if the part of it that I'm looking at, I don't know if it's, if this particular piece of property is in the same context because it says, "No light measured at eye level at the property line between any non-residential use in any residential district or shall be greater than 1/4 foot candle at the side and rear property line nor greater than 1/2 foot candle or the intensity of the available street lighting at the front property line, whichever is greater." But the, there's a, if you look at the actual ordinance, there's a chart, and at the top of the chart it says-
What number are you referring to? What is the ordinance number?
It's section 3286.
3286.
And right above the chart, it says, "In foot candles measured at the surface," which doesn't really tell you if it's the surface, you know, if you're standing right under the light or if you're standing five feet away from the light. But the only, I mean, the maximum numbers that are even listed on there is four. I mean, it's...
If I look at-
And I don't see where it says-
32-86. In commercial, it says that they can have four, four in driveways, four in parking.
Right.
Two in walks.
Right. And it doesn't say anything as far as I can see about averages. Yeah.
I did not talk with Bob. I should have talked with Bob about that.
No light measured.
At eye level property line.
So, when reading it, I interpreted as maximum of four at any given point in the site, not the average.
So, you're saying a maximum of four?
I don't, because under a light, it's more light than when you walk 10 feet away from the beam of the light. Unless you're going to have 1,000 lights in the area.
Right, but I think one thing to kind of take into consideration is like, so, looking at what Lauren pulled for some of these other communities, so East Point and Clinton Township, for example, say 10 at any point, average must be five, right?
I agree.
But ours doesn't say that. It just says, "In foot candles measured at the surface," and this is schedule of maximum illumination. So, maybe you could interpret it as average, but I, it doesn't say that as far as I can tell.
Well, to me, it's just common sense, I guess, that if you're directly under the beam of light, it's going to be higher than if you walked 10 feet away from being directly under it.
Right, and it's, and when you're looking, just another thing to point out, that there's six subparts to this section, right? The chart is in subpart six, and it says-
Yes.
"The intensity of outdoor lighting in all use districts shall be limited to the following maximum amounts." And there's nothing about averages. So, I totally understand what you're saying where it's, you know, you're standing directly under it, it's going to be different than if you're further away, but-
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the planner in the-
Did the applicant get a copy of this since we're discussing it? Do they know what we're looking at?
Yes, yep.
Anybody else have anything for planning and-
I have a question. Do we have any frame of reference for what 21-foot candles and 33-foot candles are, like, in comparison to things like daylight?
If you multiply it by 10.7, that converts it to lumens.
Okay.
So-
Does that help me a whole lot?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Thank you.
And have anything to add or clarify? After he's done, then I'll open the public hearing.
We're back in session.
All right, so Chair Farina, I think you had asked a question about our light level at the property line.
That's it.
So what I have on the screen right now, this is your zoning ordinance, and the only kind of requirements are for a non-residential use adjacent to any residential use, as well as the intensity at the street. So if we come back to our photometric plan here, you'll notice that up at the street, we're at zero-foot candles. So we're meeting that standard. Nowhere else on the site do we adjoin residential, so that standard wouldn't apply. So we would be compliant with that border standard.
So if I was working these numbers, I would have given me an average of all of your readings.
Correct. I don't disagree with you, unfortunately, because as your attorney had mentioned, the way we have to interpret it, there's no mention of average. So I have to look at what is the maximum point on the site. If I were to look at average, you can see here, this green area, and I can go back, but that's my parking, my drive aisles, all of that. My average is 5.1-foot candles. If I were to extend that across the site, that would drop significantly. And, you know, when you look at some of your peers here, where they talk about average for the site must be five, in East Point, in Clinton Township, once my entire site was analyzed, I would be below that, and I would have met the threshold.
Below four, you'd put below four?
I would have to do the analysis, I'm not sure. It's quite possible, because, you know, once you come back up here, you know, a lot of the site is low levels.
Right.
And so that's really going to bring that number down. It's just those two specific areas.
So...
Can I ask, can I ask a point of clarification, might help you guys? So that 5.1, what does, what area does that apply to?
All these green numbers. So all, anywhere where we put asphalt or concrete, where like a vehicle would drive, that's what that's...
That's, that's the only part that the five, but you're, what you're saying is that if you, that doesn't include the outer area that would be darker. So if you averaged those two, the number would be lower.
Correct. Then you would go below that five, and you would be comparable to what your, some of what your peers are saying.
I'll also add that even if, again, we understand it to be a maximum, not an average, but if it was an average, it is separated by areas, so we would have to separate it by that as well. It couldn't just be the whole site averaged.
Yeah, that's a good point. So what Lauren is saying, because you've got three variances that you're adding for, the walk area, parking, and the driveway, even if it was, it's not averages, but even if it was averages, you can't just mush the whole site together. It's each one of those areas taken into account separately.
Last thing, you took us through, thank you, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, it's okay, I was done.
Last thing, you took us through a little bit about Mr. Carwash, could you give these people the same kind of...
I did give that a little bit, I'm happy to go back and give a little bit more. What I, the one piece that I took out was kind of the reclamation component, I didn't think it was too applicable, but one of the things that...
Sorry.
It's all right. They usually come in threes.
There'll probably be more.
No worries. So I don't have a slide on here, but, but one of the things that Mr. Carwash really strives to do is be sustainable in the way that we develop these stores. Water is our largest, the largest commodity that we use, so we really pay particular attention to being good stewards of that. The way that we do that is we install a reclamation system that allows us to recover about 50% of the water that we use in the wash process. So water comes in, goes into a series of settlement tanks, so all of the large kind of particles settle out of that. And then in the second, there's three tanks, in the second and third tanks, we strategically draw water out of those, we run it through in oxygenation and...
Reverse osmosis.
I was going to say, it goes under your, under your sink, through reverse osmosis system, and we're able to reuse that water in various parts of the wash process. What's also interesting is, because of the size of who we are, we have, we have the ability to have resources down in Tucson, which is where our corporate office is, who actually manufacture parts for our wash process. So competitive washes, they may buy all of their equipment from the same companies like we do, Sonny's is a major one as an example. But we take that Sonny's equipment, we set some of it aside, and we, we design our own equipment, so that we can really fine tune in the mixture of chemistry that we're using, the amount of water that we're using, again, really to be good stewards of it. And part of why we do that is because we're reusing some of that water, we specially formulate our chemistry to work with some of the, some of that reclaimed water, the reverse osmosis water, the reject water, things like that. I'll jump back ahead here, I know there was a question about kind of, hey, give us some examples, and so I've got some photos in here a little bit later, but these are just a couple of photos of newer Mr. Carwash sites. Unfortunately, I don't have anything where it's dark, this was kind of the darkest that I could get. But you had also asked a reference point, so I had read earlier today that daylight is generally considered about 1,000-foot candles, so... This slide really just was to touch on what Chair Farina had mentioned about light, and the most intense pieces or point is right under the light, and as you get further away, it, that... And so that presents a challenge for how we light our entire site. But one of the things that I, that I spent some time doing, I've been in town all week, I had a number of hearings, both here and in Shelby Township, I looked at kind of the landscape of businesses in Frazier, to see what is the light standards. And you can see that almost, well, all of those businesses, including City Hall here, exceed the code lights, light limits. And so I'm just going to flip through these relatively quickly, but you can see on, on all of these slides, you're going to see on the left, kind of a picture of the area that I took a reading at, on the right is the light meter. You can see this is Starbucks, so this is right over by the Meyer site, this gas station was the Meyer gas station, so at Starbucks, we're at 27.7, Taco Bell, we're at 22.2, a mobile gas station, we're at 61.8, Speedway is 47.9, Credit Union is 12.3...
Ready.
36.1, Vintage Gardens, 35.9. And I should note, many of these, the lights are angled, so they're, they're not at full cutoff. All of our lighting will be full cutoff, so you're not going to see anything shining up, we're not shining anything out towards the street. I actually found as I drove by some of these that have that angled lighting, it kind of shines that glare in your eyes. Marathon, was that 81-foot candles? Smokey Joe's Liquor just over here is 25 and a half, that has, they have that same angled light. And then here at City Hall, this is a reading out in the parking lot, 7.6-foot candles, and then right out on the front sidewalk, forgive me, I had that number correct, but it's actually 32.3. The, the last thing that I had in here is I know that there was some discussion about the recently approved Sheets, and their commitment to deliver, you meet your standards. A couple of things that I just wanted to point out about that. One, to my knowledge, I know when they were approved, they had not provided a compliant photometric plan, I don't believe they provided a photometric...
Hmm.
But also, they have similar projects in and around the metropolitan area, so they have a project in Farmington Hills and a project in Chesterfield. And you can see, and these are from their plans, from the entitlement sets when they're going through the cities, they're saying that the max lighting on the site, the max foot candles, will be between 65 and 68-foot candles under the canopy, and all the way up to 42.6 in the building island, 23 in the paved areas, 15.5 in the paved areas. So I can't, I don't work for Sheets, I can't tell you that they're going to meet it, but based on comparable projects, as well as all of the gas stations in town, I would be pressed to think that they can operate with five-foot candles. So would it really kind of, oh, the other thing I was going to mention is, on this community list, one thing that wasn't noted here is for Sterling Heights, they do have a 25-foot candle limit for pump canopies, and a 15-foot candle limit for drive-through areas. So I think those are just, again, somewhat applicable to our use. So I just want to check my notes, I think I got everything. Talked about that. I did check the AutoZone as well, it was just a little bit above, it was like 5.3, 5.4, something like that. So at the end of the day, you know, we're not, we're not trying to ask for what we believe is anything egregious, it's just, it's what's already happening in town. It's unfortunate that, you know, your code is 30 years old, and maybe just hasn't caught up to where it needs to be. You know, we, we try to be good neighbors, we are good neighbors, you know, again, our business hours, we're closed by 8 o'clock, these lights are going to go down, we don't want to be a burden to anybody, we just want to be treated fairly and like other businesses that are already operating in town. So that's all I had, I'm available for...
Who conducted this test with this meter and everything?
It was me personally.
When did you do this?
Yes, this evening, actually. I did it yesterday, and then, so, I don't have the photo, I did it yesterday, and I held the light, like, I was standing like this, and then I read your code a little bit further, and realized that it's on the ground. And so I went back this evening, and I took those readings again, once it got dark, it was after 5:30 tonight, and you may have seen me sitting in my car when you came in, I was uploading my photos, because I, I took these new readings, because I wanted to be accurate. So that's why this reading, it says 66.7 at the top, because when I took it last night, I was holding it.
I don't think that's a good reading, because all the Christmas lights are on. I mean, that's really not the lights.
But it's, it's, I mean...
It's influenced by the Christmas lights that are all on.
I took it...
Working on.
And, and I, all I can tell you is that I took it directly below that light point, so...
And was...
It was 32.3. So what I was saying is, last night when I took it, because I was standing higher, it was closer to the light, so it was 66.7. I just missed this one as I was...
So the administration wasn't informed on your findings?
No, I literally, I was sitting Tuesday in my hotel room going, hey, I need to do this, because I need to see what else is around here. And I did make mention of it last night at our planning commission hearing, so...
Well, that was my question. Those readings were taken underneath the lighting down...
Correct.
So, those readings you have there, your photo readings here, where you're at your highest, in the vacuuming bays and at the point of sale?
Correct.
Those readings are directly underneath?
Correct.
Okay. Directly underneath, or like, where, where are, like, the red, the red figures, like, where are those in relation to the lighting that you're proposing to install on this site?
Yep, so, so this is our site, the canopy is not quite that, but kind of that area.
Yep.
Those blue boxes are the lights themselves.
And how elevated are those, and are, is the measurement taken from the ground in relation to the elevation?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And so those are at 13 feet high.
Okay.
They're on the underside of the canopy, so that's 13 feet clear.
Thank you.
So to your point earlier about, hey, why is there a difference? So you've got light coming out, and it's directing this way, but because we have no light out here, it's, it falls, it's not as dark. And then because we're between these two lights, that's where it's brightest. You know, you've got those two lights kind of converging, converging, so they're trying to take somewhat of a blended average of those lights, it's, it's kind of art and science, if you will.
And you're giving us your highest reading at that one point, because I notice it's not all like that through that point of sale, nor is it in the...
In the vacuums.
Correct.
Correct, yes, so we, so that was what I was asking for, is because I didn't want to say 30-foot candles, and I had a point that exceeded it, I...
Right.
That's why you notice I, my request was for 33, because my highest number is at 32.2.
Got it.
And when you come over to the vacuums, I believe my highest was like 23.1, maybe I was, maybe I was a little light there, but, but again, it's, it changes as you go along.
Yeah, but it also goes down to five, 5.7?
In some areas, yeah, depending on, again, depending on the influence of some of the other lighting that we might have on the site.
Forgive me, I, I didn't bring the entire plan set with me, because we're a little limited on space up here.
Here, you can assist.
Well, is there, is there average figures for the driveway parking areas and walks included in the plan set? And if there is, can you also just tell me what those are?
The only averages that I have are...
Yep.
These ones down here.
Okay.
So it's a little difficult, so you'll see the green and the red.
Okay.
Zoom out.
Yep.
The green is any of those drive areas where a vehicle...
Okay.
So again, the average of that is 5.1.
Okay.
The high is, the max is 32.2, the min is 0.3.
And then the other, like, the walks, okay.
Yep, the red zone is going to be our walkways, some landscape areas around the outside edges, the landscaping in here, things like that, and the average of that is 1.5.
Right. It's a little confusing, I mean, it seems like there's a lack of clarity in some of our zoning language, and the information you provided made me think like, wow, are you going to be able to see Mr. Carwash from space, or? Thank you.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's where, you know, that's part of the reason that I wanted to go look at some of these competitors, because it's, to your point, it's, it's hard. I'm not an electrical engineer, what is 20-foot candles? What is 30-foot candles? And to be able to start to see...
Designing lighting is even its own engineering discipline, so...
Exactly.
Mr. Green?
I guess my question's more for planning. In the, in the code, is there any detail on how this is need to be tested, this needs to be tested? Because it seems kind of silly that we need to come here for a variance for the maximum illumination that's focused on the focal point of the light, and it's not the whole site that's being lit up, 31-foot candles. I mean, if there's a set testing to determine what is the foot candle illumination of the site, because this is just looking at one specific focal point on a huge plot, it doesn't, it just, it doesn't make sense. I mean, just driving by, I get blinded by the gas station on the corner, and that's not... and that's not in compliance either.
So as Mr. Hisham has mentioned, the only thing that it references is where to measure it. That's how they say to measure it. They measure it at the surface. As noted, our ordinance doesn't specify averages, so we interpret it as a maximum because it says maximum. And in applying that, that is why we're here for the variance. You know, we're not here to argue whether or not this is outdated. We're not here to argue whether or not people are not in compliance. It's, it's really is, it meets the standards that are set before and if there's a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship that would warrant this.
Yep. Okay.
Joe, you had a question? No. We're an open meeting. I, I forgot to ask you a question yesterday and it has nothing to do with lighting. Just wanted to know. You recycle the water.
Correct.
Okay. What do you do with the sludge?
Uh, so we have a company that, we hire a company that come out with a, like a vacuum truck and they vacuum out everything usually once every three months.
My wife asked.
Your what?
My wife asked.
Oh, yeah. Yep, and they, and they remove it and, and, you know, process it within all laws and regulations and things like that.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Yes?
Where is your nearest Mr. Carwash?
Yeah, I'll, uh. So we only have two open in the metro area today. One is down in Canton and one is down in Frenchtown.
Where's Frenchtown?
Uh, it's way south, like 30 minutes south of the airport or so. But I will pull up on this Google Earth.
Now, the lighting that you're referring to is shutting off. Is, is that photo sensor shut off or do you flip a switch that says at 8 o'clock? You have to turn the light on.
Oh, that went off while I was to hit it with my prints. I'm sorry.
I, I don't know the answer to that. You know, if it's, if it's an issue of being on a photo sensor, I'm sure we can do that. That, I think, let me think through this. It is probably.
What should be on your plan?
Yeah, I, I'm thinking it's probably an employee because just of the varying kind of times, you know, we might not, no.
Okay, and the vacuum bays? Can somebody just, since they're free, can somebody just roll in there? Or is there a switch that kills it after 9 o'clock? Like, if I want to roll in at 9, it's lit. Can I go in there?
No, it's off. So I'll go back to that site plan. So anybody could pull in. Anybody could pull in, oh, you can't see that. Kind of right here and use those vacuums. They're not behind the pay station, if you will. But when we close for business, the vacuums are shut down.
Okay.
So you can't use them. There's a vacuum producer right here that runs and that's what produces that vacuum. And then when we close for business, that's shut off.
Although it's lit up, they can't access it.
I mean, they can come in, they can take the hoses out, but there's no suction. They're not going to do anything. Uh, and then to your question about store location, let me go back over here. So these white and blue marks are areas where we have stores. So we've got one here in Chesterfield. We're under construction in Mount Clemens. We have Fraser, Warren, actually, this one I think is Warren, Sterling Heights. This one is, this one is Macomb Township.
Oh, there's one in Macomb Township?
We're, well, we're working through that. We're actually, my civil engineer is there tonight for another.
But it's not up, it's not operational where we could see it at night.
No, the only two that are operational will be this one in Canton and then we call it, it's technically Frenchtown Township, but Monroe.
And, and last question. Are your lighting, the, the, what, the lighting requirements you're asking for now or your variance now, are those the same lighting? I'm sorry, the same lighting plan that you're using on your other developments? Or do you change it based on where your businesses are at?
Yeah, so the, the lights themselves are uniform. We're going to use the same vacuum arch lights. We're going to use the same US canopy lights. We're going to use the same site, you know, pole lights unless the city requires differently. What changes is all of the ambient light around the site. That's going to potentially affect, you know, what our.
Do you have greater or less lighting?
Right, as well as the, the overall site design. So I have some sites that might have two rows of vacuums. Well, that drive aisle is going to be brighter than this one, which just has one row of vacuum.
Okay. Got it.
Do we have all of our questions answered? Anybody up anymore? If you could step back.
Absolutely, thank you.
Open for the public hearing? Is there anything, anyone in public that wants to be heard? Having no one that wants to be heard, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back up to the board. Do we have any discussion? Or I'm open for a motion? Anybody?
I motion to approve.
I'll second.
Do we say it right? No.
Well, you, you, you have to read the.
Yeah.
All of this?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. If you're going to make an emo, if you're going to make a motion to approve, then you read what you're approving.
Okay. I make motion to approve a variance from section 3286-6 of the zoning ordinance to allow the applicant to exceed the maximum allowed foot candle illumination measurement in a commercial use. The proposed maximum illumination in the driveway is 21-foot candles where only four foot candles is permitted. The proposed maximum illumination for the parking area is 33-foot candles where only four foot candles are permitted. The proposed maximum illumination for walks is 33-foot candles where only two foot candles are permitted for walks.
Okay, and the hardships are?
The applicant has stated that the hardships are safety-related and that they need to have illuminated areas in the drive and vacuum because customers will be busy in their cars and other drivers in the vicinity need to have good line of sight on people who are moving in and around their vehicles.
And? Other businesses in the area?
And other businesses in the area have, enjoy a similar benefit in their lighting scenarios.
Okay. Counselor, does that meet your? Are you, keep us out of trouble?
Assuming what we're talking about is, is the restrictions on the board that, that no variance in the provisions or requirements of this chapter shall be authorized by the board unless the board finds evidence that all the following facts and conditions A through D exist or E and F. I think we probably want to go through A, A, B, C, and D and find those, you know, have been met. So if you, if you look at Lauren's report. Page 2. You have that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or as to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zoning district. That's A. B, that such variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right like that possessed by other properties in the same vicinity. Possibility increase for financial return should not be itself deemed enough to warrant a variance. C, the authorizing of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the intent and purpose of this chapter or the public interest. Or D.
Yeah, let's take A, okay?
Uh, and D, that the conditions or situations of the specific piece of property or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought is not of so general or recurrent in nature as to create a general rule for such conditions or situation. So if, if you're satisfied that all four of those have been met, then you're good to go.
I am satisfied.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep, I will second.
All right, any other discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Sorry, one more thing I should say. It's not just that those have been met, but there, that there is evidence of all to support all four of those, that you found evidence to that effect, so.
Okay, so before we go, let me, you're telling us that she should vote, put into her motion what the hardship is? What the, what the variance is?
Or that she, that she has seen sufficient evidence that would meet those criteria, yes.
There are no other car washes like this in the city. Would be your, I'm going to help her because this is her first motion.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to help her because. Who's the city manager?
That, well, I don't want that job. Planner's enough. The applicant has indicated that he'd like to postpone until a full board can be adjourned.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't offer you that opportunity.
I'm just concerned that.
Okay.
I'm not going to get a vote and.
Okay.
If anybody indicates how they're going to vote.
Got you, sorry. I was saying, I'm concerned that I just don't have the votes. So if, you know, everyone indicates how they're going to vote and it goes my way, then that's fine. If, but if it's not going to be favorable, I'd prefer a full board so that I can have an opportunity.
Well, I will vote to reject. I'm going to tell you that. Several reasons, because I, we have a professional that told us what her reasons are. And I, I believe in what she said. So that's mine. The other reason is your counselor came to me at the city council meeting today. Will you talk for us at the city council meeting? I said, I will tell you, the city council, if, if I'm asked, what we did and why we did it in the planning commission. I said, now, are there any other variances that you want, are going to need in this thing? No, this is the total package. I asked him twice.
Was that that approached you?
The man who was with you last night.
Oh, Joe Paluzzi, okay. Our landlord.
So that's got me a little upset. So, anyway. All right, so anybody else have, want to indicate how they're going to vote? Yes, yes?
Yes.
No?
Well, prior, prior to this presentation, I probably would not have been in favor. But after reviewing everything, I would vote in favor.
So. We, we just require a majority on this, right? Not a supermajority?
I don't know.
This is just a standard variance, correct?
It is, but I, I recall that use variances require five of seven, even though you only have six sitting.
Then he would have no choice to postpone it, to have a fair full board.
Well, look, I, I think we still would review the, how it's worded right now. No, it's not a use variance. I'm just saying that for the use variances, it's calculated on a full board. So I, we're just checking if it's calculated on a full board versus who's the quorum president or the six who are sitting on it currently? Because we do have a vacancy.
Do you want to sit on the board?
We're reviewing the ZBA bylaws right now.
So, so right now you guys are three yes, two no? Is that right?
Just, yeah, just said no.
Did he?
I'll find it. Kids. Two-thirds of the board is a use variance. Simple majority.
Yep. Does it say the board members here?
It says a simple majority.
Of the members present. Why don't you give him the section?
Section three.
Article...
Article seven, section three.
Of the bylaws?
Yes.
Of those majority of present.
Is that...
Wait, section three?
She's got it on her phone. You said section three, what was the subsection?
Section seven.
You said section three, subsection seven?
No, it was section seven.
Oh, section seven.
Hold on, I'll pull it up and bring it over to you.
Which article?
Article seven.
Where do we go?
Under the meeting?
Meeting?
CBA bylaws. Article seven.
Come on, kids, let's go.
Page 11. Oh, no, is it?
Yeah.
That's a motion to deny, but it's the same. Affirmative, two-thirds of the board is required to grant any use variance. The concurrent simple majority of the members present of the board is necessary to deny a request.
And the other one?
To make a motion. Motion to reconsider. Okay, counselor, what do you think? What's the magic number?
I'm about to call a question, counselor, so...
No, Dalton, you need to first. Well, I guess my... My point would be if you need, if you can use a simple majority to deny, why would it not be a simple majority to approve it when it's not a use variance?
The thing that I don't know the answer of, that I'm trying to find, is if you only have a quorum of five rather than the full board, does that affect the number?
It's a simple majority of those present.
To deny it, it specifically says present. Those present.
Okay, this was the section in the bylaws that you're looking at?
Yes. Let me find this over.
You said seven?
Hold on one second. Fast track this. Hold on. Article seven. Here we go. Hold on. Excuse me.
I suggest we all do homework on this.
Okay, here is, excuse me, let me sketch in here. Here's the motion on it to deny. This is for a use variance.
The affirmative vote of a major... So this is a motion to approve.
Right.
You guys were going to approve. The affirmative vote of a majority of the board is necessary to reverse order requirement, decision, or determination of any administrative official.
The version I have does not have the members present. This was Don sent this from his bill.
This is what's in our book, when they redid our book.
They should match.
Well, when we had that meeting, this is stuff from the...
To pass under this ordinance or to affect any non-use variance in this ordinance. This is a non-use variance, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the two, when they do two-thirds of the board for the use, it's five.
The seven, yeah, it always has to be of the entire board, not present. But, but you have this, which if you applied this, it would contradict that. Clearly, the use variance, I can see. Because that's the one, we've always done that.
Is there any, the only thing I'm wondering, is there any, do you guys, have you guys, when you vote on things, when there's not a full board here, do you ever take into consideration that you need more than what you would have needed otherwise?
That we need five of... Only if it was a...
Only if it was use variance.
The two-thirds only came in in certain circumstances. Other than that, we were always told it was majority.
Barring, barring there being anything else in here or the ordinance that I haven't seen that says that the numbers have to change based on the fact that there's only a quorum and not full, I would say you're right. It's simple majority for the, an affirmative decision.
I think we should get it down and find out why our book doesn't mention it, please. Right?
That's a good question.
Because these were all updated for us at our last meeting.
I have, the latest amendment is November 7th, 2019, others...
What does that show?
It would be at the very beginning. There, this one's 2002.
I wonder if he put the updated ones in here. He did. Does remember here are the ones that already had the book. We only got a couple pieces of paper. We didn't get the entire booklet. Okay, so counselor, where are we at on this?
It's majority.
It's majority?
It's majority.
Of present.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Okay.
All right, now, having heard that, I will offer you the, do you want to go forward or do you want to wait for a full board? Which is six people.
Go forward, thank you.
Okay, then I'm calling the question. Cindy, a roll call, please?
Workover Temente?
No.
Chair Farina?
No.
Workover Green?
Yes.
Workover Menendez?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. I will give you one of these. I have enough to go around. Do you have yours with you?
What do you need?
I'm not sure whether this is the latest one.
I wrote on mine. Is yours clean?
Yeah.
You already left.
Oh, it doesn't matter, I still have to...
I'm sorry, Joe? Oh, here he is. Okay, you, you...
I need another copy.
Do you have a clean copy, Joe? Is that the right stamp? Oh, here, Frank. Okay. Do you got a stamp, old? Want me to get it?
Yeah.
I don't know where mine is. I got it. And this was ZBA 24-07.
Yep. On today's date. This isn't very clear.
There you go. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, okay, here we go. Use that one. Didn't come out very good the first time.
Meeting calendar for next year.
I believe the only two dates that might create issue would be the January 2nd, and then the alternate date would be the 16th, and then July 3rd is as close to the 4th, which would, the alternate would be the 17th. And these are the third Thursdays of the month.
What was the alternate for January 2nd, Lauren?
Sixteenth.
Yes, I'm up for that.
And the other date was, again?
July.
July 17th.
Did you make a motion?
No, I didn't.
Is everybody else okay with those dates?
Uh, yeah.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I would like to approve the regular zoning board of appeals meeting calendar of 2025, with the exception of January 2nd. Amend that to January 16th, 2025, and Jan, July 3rd, 2025. Change that to July 17th, 2025, and the rest of the dates remain as submitted.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Cindy.
Workover Temente?
Yes.
Chair Farina?
Yes.
Workover Green?
Yes.
Workover Menendez?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. See on those dates. Full business, there's none. Unfinished business of the board. None. The monthly reports.
Would you like me to go over each one? Okay. So, the city staff met with Hockeyland over Thanksgiving, and they are close, I believe it's updating legal description.
There is one, one small item left.
Yep. The Sheets conditional rezoning agreement has not been finalized, but it is in the process. I believe Mr. Denault circulated something a couple weeks ago internally, and then is going to pass it along to the Sheets attorney. 34575 Commerce Road was supposed to come to this board for a variance, but they've indicated that they are looking to move out of the location they're at, but we have, we are in litigation with them over their zoning violations, as they have not moved out yet. The Meyer Parking Reduction Site Plan got approved. The, Mr. Carwash is your, got approved for site plan special land use, and now their variance. Fraser Optical last month got approved for their facade with the condition to move, to increase the area where they're using brick up to the facade, up to the doors and window awning. And the, as you're familiar, the use variance for the multiplex was approved last month, and they will be tentatively coming to Planning Commission for a site plan review in January. And city council approved the moratorium on new car wash developments, which is valid for a year. It does not impact any existing car washes or any car washes that submitted prior to November 14th. And the sign ordinance was also adopted, it was also noticed, now it is currently in effect. I believe that is all for me, thank you.
The sign ordinance is in effect now?
Correct.
Are you going to distribute that to the board members of the planning and zoning board?
I can, it's online as well, but I can send, I believe I, did I send, I sent an email?
I got, it's this one, right?
But it's not the approved version, the final version?
I think this is it.
It did not change since Planning Commission.
Okay, I don't have one because I gave mine to you.
This is probably yours.
Did I, did I email everyone after last meeting?
I thought you did.
I thought I did. Everyone should probably be sick of emails from me by now.
I think, let me look, Lauren.
Okay, Planning Commission liaison, you just heard what we did last night, so there's no need to go over that. We also approved the schedule. The recommendations did not go to city council for the, for reappointments for, in the November meeting, they will be there for this month's meeting for both zoning and planning. Is there any public to be heard? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn because the game is on.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.